Everybody attention please, welcome to the Zone Board of 24 Planes 98. As I'm the chairman, to my left, right here is Mr. Cabeas. Mr. O'Brien, Mr. Chairman, Mr. Hemmer, Mr. Ray Dell, to my left, you're right. My right, you're left, there you go. Ms. Murphy, our clerk, Commissioner Duca is behind me. If anyone has a cellphone or page, it could be people on silent and vibrate, not to interrupt the meeting. And if anyone wants to talk really, there's no microphone here, please step outside to talk, alright? It's hot enough to get up here and do this.
Uh, we've been reading the last minute.
Wait, anyone want to take an oath tonight that wants to speak? If you can speak, please, if anyone's coming up to speak. Stand up and raise your right hand and take an oath. If you don't take an oath, you can't speak.
Okay. You swear to the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth, so hope you got it.
Yes.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I make motion to waive the read of the minutes on August 27th.
On the motion, stand in our favor. Aye. Opposed? Come on. Right, we have three letters. Case, case number Z-19, Michael Graham for special permit, who raised a existing structure to construct five new townhome units on the premises number 12 Mills Street, looking for October 27th.
Chairman, number Z-19 dash 46, like the revenue of special permit varies with the existing structure. They constructed five new townhouse units on the premises number 12 Mills Street, I make motion to extend hearing to October 27th.
Second. On the motion, stand in our favor. Aye. Opposed? So, uh, on a new business, case number Z-1961, you're looking for what of October 27th?
Mr. Chairman, number Z-19 dash 61, backs of Park Road LLC, where there is construction two roof-story residential residences, a vacant lot, the grounds number seven, backs of Park Road, I make motion to continue hearing until October 27th.
Who's got the phone?
Second.
You can hold.
Okay.
You can hold.
This, uh, sorry.
You can hold, thank you. On favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Come on. Case number Z-1965.
Mr. Chairman, number Z-19 dash 65, 178 South Street LLC, from a manager for a variance by construction, 12 year residential townhouse development, on the premises number 172 South Street, I make motion to continue hearing until November 19th.
Second. On the motion, stand in our favor. Aye. Opposed? Two things tonight. Uh, 66 crap three row, case number Z-1964, 21 for special permit variance floodplain, the subdivision lot into two lots, we construct a single-family home on a newly-created lot on the premises number 66 crap three rows, the applicant representative here.
Representative for the applicant.
Step forward please.
Yes.
Carol, we have two people that have to recuse themselves tonight, and the seventh member is not here, so you would only have four people hearing the case. So, you're waiting for a fifth person, but that shall call.
I think it's wise advice.
Uh, good date?
Uh, the applicant is...
November 19th, how's that? On the first one next, I can give the next.
October 8th.
October 8th?
Exactly.
Excuse me? Wait a minute.
That later, we will not be there for that.
One minute, one minute. Have a motion please?
This is Michael, he'll be the director by the way.
Cal, a motion?
Yes. The Z-19 dash 64, 21 for a special permit, there is floodplain to subdivide a lot into two lots, a circle single-family home on a newly-created lot on the premises number 66 crap three rows, I make motion to continue hearing until October 8th.
That's great. On the motion, stand in our favor.
Aye.
Opposed? Come on. Second?
Yes, I think October 8th is a bad day for me.
Well, that's the day it is, that's what we have for an asphalt, that's what we got. If you can't make it, write a letter, and it'll be written to the record. Okay. Do that. Brother on this night business, on the old business, case number Z-1957, renovation for special permit floodplain variance to construct in addition to the premises number 15, the applicant representative here. Sorry, yeah, one sec, one sec. Anyone's gonna leave, could you please go in quickly there, so we can keep this meeting going?
I've reset the packet, I've only changed it to page two, uh, the page 11, first the third floor plan, then page 12.
Oh, want to talk, please step outside. It's time to hear the applicant. Thank you. Sorry, go ahead. This guy will write in here what he said.
Okay, so, I've reset the entire packet, I've only changed it to page two, had rendering and updated zoning chart, uh, page 11 was the third floor plan, and then 12, 13, and 14, which are page 17. Is that fair enough? What do you guys have on our last line?
Yeah, instead of the fourth floor, they really, you just got a dom, and then you got this, instead of stairs coming out.
Yes, sir.
I mean, I'm happy with that, that's what, that's what we want to get away the fourth floor. You know, you may have a flat room, all in, it looks nice, I'm happy with that. Any, any painting?
Uh, no, no question. Good, they did what they have.
Have a motion please?
Mr. Chairman, number Z-19 dash 57, where we had two floors, except for four, one point variance, subdivision terms number 15, I'm still having motion to waive the permit and variance.
Second. On the motion, stand in our favor. Aye. Right, opposed? Come on. On those side planes, come on.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for all we have. Brother on tonight's agenda, Z-1960, 2931 Newcombe Street LLC, for special permit variance floodplain finding, construct a 39-unit residential building on the premises number 2931 Newcombe Street, 39, 3539. The applicant, Mr. Donner, come on.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, Rob O'Neil, the attorney of O'Neil, I do represent the applicant, 2931 Newcombe Street LLC, Stephen Nye, CEO, manager. Quick for this evening, our team, a couple guys, our architect, Brian Donahue, Donahue Architects of Quincy, you haven't seen me yet, but our engineer, Carlos Skelty of CECL is here as well. The property consists of two parcels, 29 and 31 Newcombe Street, as well as 35 to 39 Newcombe Street as well. Both are located in a business-y zoning district, this is to give you some perspective, it's right across from the YMCA parking area. 2931 Newcombe Street is a little over 12,000 square foot parcel, currently approved by a two-family residence with accessory garage as well. 35 to 39 Newcombe Street is, again, a little over 12,000 square foot parcel, approved by a single-family residence. Total comprises a little over 25,500 square feet in lot size. Where this property sits is in a block area which is surrounded by Newcombe Street, McGrath Highway, Spear Street, and Cottington. This particular block has seen much attention over the last few years, and much interest, you know, for development, for many reasons, including its proximity to the downtown area. It's about a quarter mile walk to the Quincy Center T Station, so very close, really part of, part of the district. We feel, well, I'll get into the proposal itself. So again, it borders the Quincy Center zoning district, which, as this board knows, allows for much, much bigger developments and proposals than what you're seeing this evening. This area has a variety of uses throughout it, this entire block, single-family, multifamily homes, rooming houses, and businesses, both on Cottington as well as McGrath Highway. My client is proposing to demolish the existing residences on the property and construct a five-story, three levels of units, with two garages underneath these units, which is a 39 residential unit building. Let's speak generally, you know, because Mr. Donahue's here tonight, and able to give his presentation as well. It'll be a mixture of one and two bedroom dwelling units, and again, two levels of parking, the first and second level of the building itself. We really see this as the right residential use, you know, for this location, with its proximity to the downtown area. It would really, it's a component that would really complement the amazing growth that our downtown area has seen over the last number of years. We look at West Chestnut, even one of those residential developments, you know, and how much the retail component of downtown is really driving from that, the restaurants and other retail users. This particular proposal, I've been working with Stephen for over two years now, he's gone through a number of variations, proposals, to get to the right, the right one, and we know we have that down. Our original proposal was for 52 units, it had a level of subsurface parking as well, and we are in floodplains, so we are requesting some relief, we expect that from this board. We had tighter setbacks with the 52 unit proposals, well, and a little bit more of a modern experience. You know, with the help of Council McCarthy, we've been able to work and meet and present these proposals to many of the neighbors who are here this evening, that you will certainly hear from them. There's no hiding the fact that, you know, neighbors have concerns with different aspects of it, whether it be the scale, the style, the materials that are going to be used, you know, for this building. Important for you to tell the board, Stephen, my client, has listened to this, over the time that we spent, you know, proposing something here. Most recently, this was a proposal of 52 units that was presented to our planning board here in the city. We hadn't met with them again until June, because we went through some very substantial revisions to this project, which is before you this evening. One, we removed the story, you know, resulting in a height reduction between 10 and 12 feet. We slimmed down the footprint of the building itself, meeting or exceeding all the setback requirements of the ordinance. Upper floors, part of them have been recessed into the building to kind of address some of the scale concerns that neighbors have, and we've incorporated a lot more brick to the, to the outside of the building as well, based on some neighborhood comments, neighborhood comments with the style of the building itself. You know, we're here before this board for some relief, one being a special permit floodplain, you know, from this board, special permit for the residential use, because these properties are located in a business-y zoning district, and we're seeking a finding as well. As the residential exists there today, it's not conforming, this is really an expansion of that, of that non-conforming property. As I mentioned to this board, this has been through, through planning, site plan review, as this board knows, very comprehensive, a lot of review, you know, we have a peer review consultant representing the city of Quincy, the planning board, all the city departments have reviewed as well, and we've come to a point where, you know, for different reasons, the planning board has not voted on this, and Jake and Mr. Duke can say a little bit with respect to that too, but they, they failed to vote on this proposal for different reasons. Important for this board to understand, we received a recommendation, positive recommendation from our planning department in the city of Quincy, which is forwarded to the planning board, the board here. So again, we have a positive recommendation for the proposal before you this evening, we've been through peer review, a clean peer review, clean city department as well, including traffic, as well as engineering, all came back positive, no, no outstanding concerns or questions by those departments or peer review consultants. We've been through conservation commission, that was continued until October, but we know that an order of conditions will issue in, in October. Before this board, you know, this has been designed, you know, this proposal, this 39 unit, to meet or exceed many of all the dimensional requirements of the ordinance. I'm not asking for any dimensional relief, you know, I'm asking for the special permit for floodplain, for residential use, and a finding for the Quincy expansion. If you have no questions for me specifically, I'll turn it to Brian Donahue, so he can present as well. Thank you.
Can you tell me the total number of pocket space?
So we have 64 parking spaces, let's be clear, Mr. O'Brien, so 39 units, 64 parking spaces, which, which is a little over 1.6, which meets, which actually exceeds the ordinance requirement for parking.
Thank you.
And that's all located on the first and second floors of October 27th.
You did mention that you'd looked at subsurface lot originally?
We didn't.
So, is the reason that you got away from that because of the lower number of units, or also because of the existence of the floodplain?
We were, we appeared before conservation, and neighbors, as well as the commission, had some concerns with respect to that.
Okay.
Although we provided, you know, Carlos Skelty from, from CECL, great engineer, he presented everything, it would have worked, it would have, but there were concerns that were there, so that's one of the things that we looked at.
It seems like you're higher on that side of the street than most of the ones I've heard.
That's correct, that's correct, yeah, we are. But, you know, one of the first things we looked at, you know, because there were neighbor, there were concerns as well as conservation commission, so that's one of the first things that we changed.
Did you have a traffic report?
Yep, so we, we actually had, the city has really adopted, there's a memorandum that goes around to, from the, which was drafted by the city, traffic engineer of the city, proposed developments, what the council may be, so that's board, and a, and a report is done based on that memorandum, and that was, that was prepared by Tool Design, Erica Gudimoni and Heather, I forget the last name.
Did you have that done?
I'm sorry?
Did you have that done?
Stephen had that done, yes. Yep. Based on what the city's engineer was, the traffic engineer was looking for, that was done in, viewed by her.
Well, Stephen, you asked to have it wait, and we said no.
They said, they said no, grab. Yep, they did, so we did, so it's based on what the, what the anticipated council will be for this proposal, is what type of study you need done, so a pretty comprehensive study was done for this, and, and review by the city's traffic engineer as well.
Cardos are partners?
These will be market rate departments.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thanks, brother. Mr. Chairman, members of the board, Brian Donahue, principal of Donahue Architects, we're running that way here in Quincy. We've been working as well with NIOC for quite some time on this project, the board here to show the existing conditions with the improvements of the two residential units that are here, plus the parking, the garage, and the fear of this, this particular parcel. We actually started out working on one of the lots, and then this NIOC obtained the rights to the second, the second adjacent lot, so the project became a combination of those two, those two lots. As Rob mentioned, it's 25,500 square feet, so it's a little over half an acre. So, as Rob mentioned as well, this is a 39-unit development within five stories, the first two levels are parking levels, as well as some amenities. This, this particular drawing shows the site configuration of the building as it sits on the lot. There are two curb cuts, one is a drop-off lane for deliveries and postal, deliveries and so forth, and then the garage entry is here. So, I just want to reiterate that, we've been through many iterations on this as well, with parking on site, it was exposed, parking undercover, and parking in all different configurations. 64 spaces in this building are all contained within the building on two levels, so there will be no site parking at all, headlights and that kind of thing shining towards neighbors' properties. So this, this shows the ground level and the site improvements, so we have, on the Hassan side, we have a 13-foot setback, in the rear, we have a 20-foot setback, on this eastern border, we have an 18-foot setback, and the building is skewed a little bit to the property line to accommodate the drives and then, and give some exposure to people coming and going out of the driveway. That goes from 13 up to 25 feet, so it goes, it goes at a, at an angle to the property line, as you can see here. So on the ground level, as I mentioned, there are 30, 30 parking spaces, obviously an entry lobby, amenity space, like storage, it could be a common room, trash containment spaces, and then, within this, within this level, there are the spaces, and then you go up a ramp towards the back of the property, towards the back of the building, that takes you up to the second level. The second level is completely occupied by parking spaces, 34 spaces minus the lobby and vertical circulation. And then once we get up to the living levels, we get three living levels with 13 units per floor, we have, we have 21 two-bedrooms, and 18 one-bedrooms. So, it really translates into, as one bedroom, a parking space, that adds up to 60 spaces, so we have a surplus of six, of four spaces, and it relates to the number of bedrooms in the, in the development. As I mentioned, it's five stories, 51 feet tall to the highest point of the roof. Again, as Rob mentioned, we had started off with a fairly contemporary design, and we evolved to a more residential mansard-type of architecture. This building has a base, and a middle, and a top, as, as most buildings of this style do. The lower level, I've got some blowups to carry over, but just from the Newcombe Street elevation, again, you can see the five stories, the first story being the wall, and the first two stories being the parking levels, and then the three levels are living space, the top level is built into the mansard. 51 feet from the street elevation of the threshold of the garage, so it's approximately, the grade slopes up, so it's approximately 45 feet, the rear building as it sits to the property line in the rear. This is just an enlargement with some three-dimensional rendering to show the building a little bit better. The, the building is fairly straightforward and traditional in terms of its design, the entryway has got a little bit of glass in it for the lobby areas as you grow up, have a nice space to go up and go into the building. In terms of materials, we're thinking, just to correct, Rob, you said brick, but it's really a cast stone, the base is a cast stone, which is a, it's a synthetic limestone, which is a combination of much different materials, which replicates like an Indiana limestone, so that would be a national art pattern. That is the base, the two levels of parking are built with that, then the first two living levels are fairly straightforward, cloud boards and composite trim, all of this material would be, would be the low-maintenance type, which is, you know, composite material, not vinyl, but like a hardy plank or something like that, if you're familiar with those kind of synthetic materials. And then the top level is a synthetic slate, which is not real slate, but replicated, replicates it, a lot less expensive and a lot longer life. The fenestration is simple double-hung windows with heated black sash, two over two, fairly straightforward and simple. There's just a couple of drawings here that I'd like to show, this is an aerial perspective, looking at the building from the neighborhood from the back, so this is the neighborhood of homes that are kind of, are, they're in the street, and one of, the one parallel to And then this is a view from, is the west, the building, the decision of the, the section through the site shows that we made an effort to bring the scale down, the floor-to-floor heights are not that extensive, so you can see as, as the grade goes up into the neighborhood, the actual building line is not significantly higher than what's there now, so I think these are fairly telling, and as Rob mentioned as well, we've taken the story off, taken 12 feet off it, another 12 units, so we've been working hard to bring this into scale with the neighborhood, and I think we've made a lot of progress, and we're pretty happy with the building, so if anybody has any questions on the architecture, plans, the layout, the site, we'd be happy to answer.
What's the fake slip, do you know?
It's a combination of rubber, there's rubber in it, and it's really recycled materials, it's very green.
So it is something real and outside, all synthetic, very?
That's, that's what it's really come to, you know, it's like, you know, people want longevity in their materials, and as long as it's, it withstands its potential time, and it looks nice, you know, dumping down those real materials, but it's, it's not where we are.
I have one question, I don't know if it's the other person. Is Newcombe Street all Westland?
No.
So the jurisdiction of conservation, it's coastal storm, flowage, so it's ocean essentially, which is the YMCA as well, but it's the same, same jurisdiction.
Yeah, but how about the remaining houses? They in it?
I don't know exactly where the, I think it's, very little of, of these properties are within the floodplain itself, but unfortunately, the flood is...
Flood elevation 11, so from this point, this way is in the flood elevation, the rest of the site is not.
Thank you. I'm good as well? Rubbish, where do you go for rubbish on 11th?
We've designated a area on the lower level for a trash room. We try to work a chute into it, would be, would be the best case scenario, but if we have to bring it down, then we'll have a service that comes in, it's sized to probably be serviced twice a week, we would contact, and then we, we owe it out to the trucks. No dumpster on site.
Okay. How does the ventilation work on the two parking levels?
It, it will be fully mechanically ventilated, heated and ventilated, so it's, it's, it's an engineering question that, that, you know, would be addressed at the time, it would, they would be, we've got a number of these, what we're saying, like trellises, to, to make it look a little bit more residential, so those openings would create the space to bring fresh air in, and then there would be mechanisms inside to exhaust and, and bring the air in, so it's, I can't speak to it from an engineering perspective, but that's how it would work. These are closed spaces.
Be closed?
Yes. Other than the air intakes. Sometimes you see it in garages with lovers and things like that, so we've replicated a trellis for the purposes of attracting, something a bit more attractive than lovers.
Venting goes through the roof?
No, it just goes, it goes out, there's an exhaust, it goes out the side, side doors.
Anything else? Guys, one sec? Anyone that would like to speak in favor? Anyone want to speak in favor? First call, second call, third call closed. We have correspondence, like to read in the record?
We have a letter from the DP Donahue, "We have reviewed revised stormwater report May 2019, and revised plans of May 31st for above-recorded project, with this project. We have the following comments: Drainage, number one, maintenance plan shall be recorded at the North Hall County Registry needs. Two, explain how to remove and store the snow on the roof. Three, apply for a drain permit from Department of Public Works of Construction. Four, the public infiltration system violates the setback requirements of the property line and building foundation. Five, discuss how to control the groundwater during construction, provide details on the de-watering process on that site, if any, for the excavation. Water issues. Perform water flow test at the city's water department. Instill individual gate-to-fire service. Divide calculations to show the two, two foot, oh, sorry, two-inch proposed investment service added to 39-unit development. We recommend four-inch service pipe to be used." Similar questions, "The existing pipes in Manhole Street should be inspected with television pre- and post-development, ordered to check the condition of the system. Television reports shall be submitted to our office for assessment. If the sewer manhole, for the connection required for replacement, a standard water type, non-watering manhole should be installed." Generally, number one, install stone or concrete survey monuments, survey monuments, to, to delineate the property line of the public right-of-way. The monuments shall be set by a professional land survey. Two, the plans should not show the locations of stockpile and/or staging areas of construction equipment and materials. Third of all, the applicant has not addressed construction period, traffic, and pocket impacts. The applicant should provide a detailed sequence of construction, specifically addressing any space constraints, and detail how they will be addressed as construction progresses. Given the magnitude of the pump of the post-development is unclear, so how the development will be constructed without utilizing adjacent right-of-ways. Three, the trash room seems smaller, 39 units. Four, the project is in a school... Four, the project is in a schoolyard. We recommend installing designs for light drives entering, exiting the garage to yield adequate lighting should be provided. The existing lots and parcels should be consolidated to one lot parcel for the developer. Consolidation plans should be recorded at the registry of deeds. All proposed buildings should have house numbers assigned by the engineering department, BPW, I'm sorry, Engineering Division of the DPW, to help keep buildings from empty issue. Six, the entire proposed stormwater and sewage system shall be cleaned and flush prior to the final acceptance. Number seven, submit AutoCAD file for the project before applying for building permit. Files should be in mass state plan coordinate system and preferably in Quincy standard data layers. Eight, upon completion of the project, as-built plans show the utilities building footprints, tradition, grade, reference bound and benchmarks defining the total site facilities and right of way need to be submitted along with an AutoCAD file. The as-built plans shall be in the mass state plan coordinate system in Quincy standard data layers. Plans should be stamped and signed by a professional land surveyor or professional engineer. Develop and when the contractors shall contact the design engineer prior to installation of foundations and utilities to allow proper inspection of data collection of the as-built plans. We will not accept any data on the as-built plans not selected by the design engineers or surveyor prior to installation. As elevation certificate will also be submitted to the properties in the flood zone. It's a BPW.
I just got one, landscape plan, do you have one?
We do, I believe that was submitted with the.
Is this it? Is this what, is this what that is? Or is that just his?
That's it.
I don't have one, you have one?
Do I have one?
No, you have one.
We do, yeah, we have a professional landscape architect.
Yeah. Let me finish this and then we'll move on to the paper. Is there anyone opposed or undecided? First call, step up forward, name and address for record, please.
My name is Stephen Hallowchuk, I live on Francis Avenue. Francis Avenue is between Newcombe Street and Spear Street. Just like to address lot size. Quincy zoning law requires that this development have a minimum lot area of forty-two thousand square feet. The lot provided is only twenty-five thousand five hundred and sixteen square feet. Mr. Nioses' lot is sixteen thousand four hundred and eighty-four square feet out of compliance. In other words, the closed lot provides only sixty-one percent of the square footage required by Quincy zoning law. It is thirty-nine percent short of the minimum square footage required. The reality is that the proposed building is grossly oversized for the lot on which they want to build it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else opposed or undecided? Step forward, name and address for record, please.
Tom Stanford, 38th Newcombe Street. Just like to speak a couple of things on the density. The average density of the existing large-scale apartment project in Quincy is twenty-one units per acre. This project will add thirty-nine units to just over a half an acre. This exceeds the average by more than three times. Under a block bordered by Newcombe, McGrath, Spears and Francis Ave, there are currently eighty-one units of housing with a hundred and thirty-eight bedrooms. Between this proposal and the already proposed by George Lang on McGrath Highway, eighty-three units of housing with a hundred and sixty-eight bedrooms will be added to this one block. This will double the number of units and increase the number of bedrooms by a hundred and twenty percent. The tallest structure in this neighborhood, excluding the Bethany Church, is two-and-a-half stories tall. At five stories, this structure will be twice the height of the tallest existing structure. The building will be tall in the YMCA and the Quincy High School. This structure will tower all the existing houses in the neighborhood. Residents on the upper floors will have to be, will have an unobstructed view into the adjacent houses. There will be shells cast over the existing neighborhood houses. It just doesn't, this building is so big, it just doesn't fit in with the neighborhood. Speaking about traffic, I've got pictures I can show you. This is a main street with Quincy High School. It's a cut through from McGrath to Cawdene. If you try to come down here at schooltime, you can't even move, the traffic is so heavy. Now, the traffic study was done by the city. Trip generation assessment. We greet, the street will see one thousand five hundred and thirty-eight vehicles. On Saturday, eight hundred and fifteen vehicles. Additional research by the consultant indicates that the proposed development would generate ninety vehicles trips daily and eighty on Saturday or Sunday. The proposed development has sixty-four parking spaces. However, the planning board has approved Mr. Lang's development, which is still waiting for approval and some other things. Fifty-eight parking spaces, fifty-three of these, the traffic is going to become anonymous in Newcombe Street. So we have traffic from McGrath Highway coming onto Newcombe Street. These projects, both projects will put additional, a hundred and twenty-two additional vehicles using Newcombe Street, which is only thirty-three feet wide and has a few hundred feet long. Empties onto a busy congestion in McGrath Highway and Cawdene Street. When you come down that street at times, you can't even get out of Newcombe Street onto McGrath Highway. And then trying to go out onto Cawdene is just as bad. The fact that, you know, this is summertime, streets clear. When it snows and they come down and they just crowd down the middle of the street, the students are walking down the street, today's generation's got, they don't even look what's going on. They walk right on the front of you and then they look at you and they say, how far because you hit them? It's just a really bad number of vehicles. And that's my opposition.
Thank you.
Like I said, just the traffic, if anybody wants to look at some pictures of what the street looks like.
Yeah, at all times, every morning, I know.
Yeah, I do.
Is there anyone else opposed or undecided? If anyone else wants to speak, please come up. We have a lot of things to do tonight, so not to wait for people to come up, we gotta move. Thank you.
Hi, Laura Blanchard, 31 Francis Ave. Newcombe Street is located in a flood zone. Everyone in this neighborhood is required to purchase flood insurance. The town, the area gets flooded by Town Brook, a high water table runoff from Francis Ave and the YMCA. Picture of Mike from Mike Horch showing where the water comes up in a normal rainstorm. It comes right up to the curving, it's all flooding into one area. Heavy rains from a couple of years back, coming from Spear Street caused the wall of South Shore Auto to collapse. They had to close, that business had to go out. They lost a lot of business. My neighbors have had more flooding in their yard since the new YMCA was built. Now, that was supposed to have all these flight controls and the new parking lot and everything. They have worse flooding now. In March 2018, the entire street from Newcombe to McGrath Highway was flooded in a heavy rainstorm. We just are thinking that this project is going to cause a lot more of this heavy rain because where is that water going to go? When you start building this way and you're taking up all of the ground space and everything else as opposed to having just two houses and tearing them down. Just because, before you were asking about Newcombe, whether the area was, when I had my property evaluated, all of Newcombe Street is in the flood zone. All of Newcombe Street is in the flood zone, according to the federal, whatever that is. Do you need the photo of Francis Ave and Newcombe?
Thank you. Anyone else?
My name is Nancy Sedilla, 13th Newcombe Street, directly across from this property. I have lived in my home my entire life in this neighborhood. I strongly oppose a building, five-story building in a neighborhood of single-family, two-and-a-half-story homes. This project is approximately sixteen thousand square feet above the zoning for business-y properties. This exceeds the required footage of buildings on this property. I oppose this variance. A building of this magnitude would overshadow our neighborhood. The building should fit into the neighborhood and not overpower it. The building materials should be consistent with the homes that are already in the neighborhood. Because contrary to what people think about our neighborhood. Flooding is a concern, the YMCA, my property is located in the middle of my neighborhood. And when they put in the fancy drains and everything, one of them ended up in my yard and my yacht floods constantly now, the back of my yacht. I have a swimming pool in my yacht, I don't need to swim. Trust me, I've lived, you know, this is my life. It's just, the building is too big. It just overpowers everything, as my husband said. This is a residential neighborhood and it will impact our neighborhood. We enjoy sunlight, we enjoy gardens and all of that is going to be taken away from us because we're going to have nothing but this huge building. I sit in my living room, read a book, I want sunlight. I don't want anything to be blocked by a five-story building. And I don't want the flooding to be in my front yard now and in my basement, and that's my big concern. And also a big concern with the driveway. My, one of my driveways, I'm going to do a press house, one of my driveways is directly across from where traffic is going to come in and out of this building. There's no traffic on the other end, there's no, you know, sidewalks, driveways on the other end because of the YMCA hobby of mine. This should be a consideration for the neighborhood. I work in Boston, I see these buildings every day. Quincy doesn't need any more big buildings. I strongly oppose this.
Jeff, 197 Elm Street. I was wondering if Mr. Dooker could clarify the neighborhood, as I talked about earlier, where it stands in the neighborhood.
Sure, go ahead, I get your question, keep going.
I believe the first proposal was just for one of these properties, it was thirty-five and thirty-nine units. We argued for it, so originally this proposal was small, then it grew before it shrunk again. So the original owner of thirty-five and thirty-nine Newcombe Street was against the project and now he's joined the project, or in some way they're using that project. I don't think it's kind of neighborhood you guys, or maybe you would want to live in at this time. Our neighborhood is being overtaken by this big development. Parking is a huge problem and it's only going to arise. The previous owner of thirty-five and thirty-nine Newcombe Street, Mike McKenna, tried to subdivide the two lots and build the two-family on the newly created lot. He went before this board three times before he withdrew with El Predix. The city did not want a single-family and a two-family owned lots thirty-five and thirty-nine Newcombe Street. I don't see how they could want this one strategy. In a very similar situation about six hundred yards away, at 205 Elm Street, the apartment building was graded four more two-bedroom units than they were supposed to get by zoning. Yet, three doors up, just three doors up at this one, on Elm Street, the owners tried putting an in-law apartment. They had parking spaces for six cars and they were going to put dormers in their attic for their parents and they were denied an in-law apartment in their parking. It's a two-family, six floors. So if we don't give people that live in the neighborhood the right to build an in-law apartment for their parents, it's just crazy. Now these people are going to move elsewhere because it's, they hit a point where they have to do something. So they're going to rent their property out and now we lose another only owner-occupied property in the neighborhood. It doesn't make any sense that we allow properties like, big properties like this in and yet we don't take care of the people, their everyday job, lives in the neighborhood. So, and until we can have another meeting and try and clarify these issues, I strongly suggest you vote this project out, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
My name is Jostin, I'm a thirty, I live at sixteen Alts Street, not Quincy. I may not be from the neighborhood, I know the neighborhood, I walked by it all the time when I went to school as a young kid. We own properties on Spear Street, we own. So I agree with all the traffic and all the other things that the people before me have said. The planned buildings are going to be constructed in an area of, with all historical homes. Most of them either are under historical or architectural significance. The house at forty-one to forty-three Spear was the home of George W. Prescott and was in the Prescott family from 1857 through 1923. It is one of the finest period residents of the area. The house has now been changed since when it was published in 1889, seventh edition of Skeeter Ledger. The six-family unit apartment at thirty-five Spear Street was built in 1913 by the Prescott family. A huge shade, very buffalo style. It was, if we lose sight of these unique style homes in this neighborhood and other neighborhoods around Quincy, our city of Quincy for some of us who grew up here and went to school, got married, bought their first and second homes in the city that we love, came to see our neighborhood changed for love. I am assured meetings were held in 1911 when the zoning changes took place or if the citizens of Quincy were aware what type of changes were coming. I always had the impression that the whole Hancock Street from Quincy Square all the way up to North Quincy were the areas where the changes would take place. And I'm not sure if a lot of others would probably understand, thinking as I was. I mean, I don't remember meetings in 1911 where zoning was changed. So I am a concerned citizen of Quincy. I have these two properties, they're here, if you want to look at them. Something that went with this area would be nice. Why do we have to accommodate big builders? For what reason? For money? Is that why we want to do in Quincy, just money? Well, I, if I was love Quincy as much as I do, do we want to destroy our city? And then, why should you take all these buildings down and these places down? They won't be there anymore. So I just would like people to think about it. Money isn't everything in this world.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Many, many animals, house or a bunch, Block 33 Street, former resident of the Blue Street. We're flooded, we've already got promises all the time, the government government, and flood would happen. Then it only took until 2014, a big giant flood, and happened with West Quincy, where it actually be taken care of. This is saying it's not forming a, and they came up and the attorney said that they have a right to build, but you actually do have to give some variance for this to happen. And the fact of the matter is that they're moving into a flood zone and the YMCA, this neighborhood actually had an impact, and the YMCA promised that they'd divert the problems in this neighborhood. I have some large concerns about that. And when developers have come up and said this is going to make it better, and the YMCA is a pretty big developer, they came up and said it was going to make it better and created pools in people's backyards, it didn't solve the problem. And this is ocean water and it's a concern. So this is the stuff that we really have to pay attention to and how we're going to do it. This is a large building that they are putting up and it's going to impact the neighborhood and offsetting the water isn't that simple. I think you all know that, eventually there won't be any place to offset the water. And then they get people involved and everybody's in the flood zone. So I oppose this and what I'm really disappointed in is that, this was at the planning board and they couldn't get a form for it and it came here because of that. And the fact of the matter is an outrage of neighbors that were here and that the developer couldn't go back and actually make this work for the neighborhood. It's changed, but we know, instead of, we were told to bring the parking up instead of down and sell up. And it's just, it's not, it's not working. And then the other thing is when you say, or when the, city of Quincy says that the traffic engineer passes and said that this would impact the traffic, I've said this every time I've come up in front of the board here in Quincy. We cannot keep saying the development has zero impact to traffic, it's embarrassing. You know, you can't move in the city, I know you can't, I know where you come from.
Anna, take it out of the house next.
You can't, you can't go anywhere. I can tell you right now, it takes you less time to get to Rhode Island when you get to the highway than it does to go to Aspen. So honestly, we really have to.
Just like self-boss.
Yeah, we really have to take some responsibility and unfortunately, this is, this is your responsibility. I'm not trying to lay heavy on you, but I just really. I'm not trying to lay heavy on you, but I just really need for people to start to take this to heart because it's happening all over the cities. And I love all the, I'm going to keep coming back. So it's usually the same. Really, I mean, just because they are looking for variances. And that is the thing that they can't have because they're not willing to work with the neighborhood and we can't work with us. And that's how I think we're necessary. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you. Anyone else?
Good evening. Ten Mill Rain, one oh one in Road Road. My understanding is that this development for the planning board, I guess not voted on, but at the meeting prior to last, one board member has asked the developers, we should have neighbors and work, by all accounts, as not occurred. Again, I'm not in the neighborhood, but those that are say that has really not occurred. So I think that's one consideration that has to be taken into account.
Excuse me. Can I get your name and address?
Sure. Ten Mill Rain, one oh one in Road Road.
Thanks.
So I, I think that's an important point. Developers need to work with neighbors to get the best planning possible. I think that's the case here.
Thank you. John?
John Roderfeld.
You get the camera in?
Actually, you can see both me and you, Marty, so.
It's one thing. Sure, you're in.
I can see Mike. You're, you're safe, Ross.
I see.
You're pretty safe over there. That's the best seat over there. That's where the chief seats are on the license board meetings. But okay, John Roderfeld, I currently don't live in Quincy anymore, but I drive up here all the time to come to these meetings because I really love to come to these meetings. And my address is eight Jackson Street today. I actually voted for the first time and talking today for John O'Connell, if she wants. But I'm standing up here as someone that has not only been to last week's planning board meeting or last month's zoning board meeting, but for three years straight, over three years straight, I've been to every planning board meeting, every zoning board meeting, I've recorded every meeting.
Even sick, did I even see you there?
I, I was, I almost died one time and I still came.
Oh, you died.
And I'm not even late. I, I, I mean, I, you know, and ironically, I did have one technical difficulty one night. And that was the first crazy farm block and I got that special planning meeting. All right, all right. But anyway, back, back to, you know, where we're going. The city has changed. I mean, how many times did I stand up here and I say there's something wrong with business C zoning? Obviously, there must not be anything wrong with the zoning because we haven't changed anything. And it's still like that is. And the people have to realize that the city has changed. Traffic is going to get worse. This development, we're only in about the second or third inning of a baseball game that's probably going extra innings. So we're going to get ready until, you know, traffic's not going to get better for about ten more years. So I was looking today at development that has happened. Look at the Amelia. Sixty thousand square feet, two hundred units. That's three hundred square feet per dwelling unit. Okay? This unit here, this isn't the greatest project, but it isn't the worst project. I'm sitting up here right now saying I am undecided. What we need is new growth. We need good new growth. All the new growth in Quincy is going to happen in business C. It's going to happen up in the Quincy Center Business District. Or it's going to happen in the new Wallaston Urban Redevelopment District. If you live in one of these districts, there's going to be like construction for the next ten years. So it's hard to fight. Also, if you live in a flood zone, you're going to have floods all the time when it rains. I mean, you know, so the complaint about living in a flood zone and say, hey, I get a flood in my backyard, okay, it's, it's hard, you know? I mean, I personally, I want to live on high land, not in residential C. Unless, of course, I was developing myself because, you know, we do need housing. There is a need for housing. And so, you know, why need new growth? Because new growth pays for new taxes. Sixty-eight million dollars we're getting in taxes from the Amelia. This project here will get a lot of taxes. We have been bonding millions, hundreds of millions of dollars of debt. And unless we get the new growth, Marty, I've watched you. You sit up there. We have become like Southie. We are like Southie now. Does, is Southie not good? Okay, Southies, you know, we, we basically have become part of Boss.
You know what? I moved here not to be in Southie. That's what I get, Joe. I moved here not to be in Southie.
Well, I mean, I only know Quincy, okay, and I love Quincy. I'm going to come back to Quincy eventually.
I live in a top of a mountain and I get floods. My house floods. I'm going to talk on a freaking mountain.
Well, I mean, you know, let's take Johnson Gilson that I just drove by coming by. That's very dense. People talking about all the developments, the new developments that they're doing now in Quincy are extremely dense. And they are in the business C. I can say right now, I'm a real estate broker because of what's been going on in the city of Quincy. Everyone's property values right now are at an all-time high. So everyone has like a winning scratch ticket that you could just cash in and sell if you don't want to handle this anymore. And I can tell you, that winning scratch ticket five years from now might be a losing ticket.
What does that have to do with the project?
Well, well, it has to do with the project.
A lot of people don't want to sell. They want to live here and pay their taxes and live here until they die. They don't get a house for ten dollars. That's what I mean. You hear that? No, you don't because you're not a homeowner. Thank you. Finish. What you're doing is you're trying to tell us about taxes and this. We're, we're, you got a lot of it taken. Get to the point of driving. I don't need twenty-five scenarios. Your time's almost up, so finish.
Okay. Well, I'm glad it isn't up. Okay. Most could be a long time for us to understand. Whatever my point is, my point is that, okay, I'm sitting up here as just a regular guy who's been watching every week all the different neighborhoods, okay? And what I'm seeing is that there's certain neighborhoods that have people that advocate and that come up. And they, they are against things. And they're against things. I mean, there's a lady behind me that, she, she spoke for me. When I was looking at the properties today, I was looking at like, whose young men's, I was looking at who owns those properties across the street. And they bought everything except for that one house. And that's the person that's complaining right now that we're still on the street. And it's so hard. So, I mean, I, when I was up here complaining with the people, we got nowhere. So what I'm trying to do is try to build responsibly in the city. I'm trying to stand up and say, look, this project really isn't that bad, okay? You know, this is, we need the new growth. I mean, taxes are going to skyrocket if we don't have new growth. And the new growth is going to be in the business C. Like, if we want to stop this, we need the city council to change the zoning and to change the rules on what can be done on, on business C. And I, I, I'm not on the city council. I can't do that. So, you know, all I ask is that you, you know, look at these projects the same throughout the cities and do everything the same. Because I'm thinking of what's happening on Arlington Street in the business C. And that's just as bad or even worse. This is six hundred and fifty square feet per dwelling unit. And I, like I said, I think for a tax base, I think this is, you know, this isn't terrible new growth, you know? I don't think it's, it's the best thing, but I don't think it's the worst thing. So, I mean, I'm standing up here as an undecided. There's no one who is for it. We have a whole bunch of people who are against it. But I'm someone that's saying that, you know, I haven't understood what's going on up here for years. And for you to be saying that, you know...
But nobody said anything, Joe.
No one said nothing.
Well, it, it's just that, you know, my, my point that you threw me off before is, is, is what the point, I don't know who I'm fighting.
You read the baseball games and lottery tickets. Come on.
I just don't know. It just, it, it, it's almost like this whole thing.
I understand English, but speak frankly, Tim.
This isn't a game and there's no winners and there's no losers is basically what it is. And, and it's kind of like, you know, we're all playing together and we're all on the same team. And it's about how do we get along and make this a better city and fix things that are working better, okay? And, you know, I don't want to fight with the people behind me and I don't want to fight with the people in front of me. I just want to sit down and shut up.
Is there anyone else? All of our party here in applause. You know, it, it's like, it is going to happen in these areas and that's the bad one. But we're going to be losing neighborhoods. And we've got to really think about these things. We've really got to think about these things. What neighborhoods are going to be taken in Quincy? And they are going to be neighborhood taken.
With a single-family home?
I get it. I get it because of development. But you know what? There's places for that. There really is. There's places that we promised we were going to do that. Downtown is one of them. And, and you know what? The high school, the YMCA, all this stuff. But we were promised that that one's going, not going to flood over here at the YMCA. That's what we were told. And I see it still flooding, you know, all the time. And that bothers me because they supposedly opened up the pipes. They did everything they could. They fixed it up. My God, it took years to get that pipe fixed and then whatever the other things were. For Mikey's, they had to fix that. Yeah, whatever they had, right? They had to fix those for years. And they had to do it. So it's like, there's going to be winners and losers. You're right. But, you know what? Here's what bothers me about this thing. It really does. There's still single two-family homes up there and a shadow bothers me. That drives me absolutely crazy in the neighborhood. And it's not like you're putting up a two-and-a-half-story building and you might have twelve-foot floors and you're going to wreck your neighbors. Well, that's life. That happens. One house gets wrecked. If someone builds a house and they get a single floor house, that happens. They're going to build up with you or they're going to move on. Yeah, it's next. But they got a right to build their own house. This here is a little different. And here's what I'd like to know. I want to really look at this a little closer. You know what? It wasn't dawn on me at all about shadows until someone said that. And I goes, I didn't even think of that. And I drove down and I looked over and I know how everything's going to change. I get all that. But we're going to see what that height of that building, at sixty feet, fifty-something feet, is going to do to the house that will be signed. I think it's, I think that's fair. And just me, I'd like a couple of weeks to go filter that myself.
Mr. Chairman, if I may.
No, we may not.
We have a shadow study for the board. Do you'd like to see it?
Hey. This is, this is what I would, maybe I will, maybe I will. I'm talking to my board about something I like. Okay?
No, we have to ask the board.
But that's not going to do it for you. Not something you brought up as a opponent. And I see it and I read it and I go, okay, that's something I need. That's all I'm asking my board. Give me a couple of weeks to go look at this building and see what this is really going to impact and who it's going to impact. And it's going to happen. I know it's going to happen. The city's growing and it's going to grow up. These are the people that are going to get hurt. But at what cost? I don't know. I don't know. You know, there's, there's, these people are trying to put in seven units and take down one house and do this and do that. That's got to stop. I think it's got to stop. I think building in these neighborhoods has to stop. We have to have a development area building. This, this, I hate to say, is going to be potted. Eventually, it's going to be potted. All that area up there, it's all going to be potted in that area down there. It's just going to grow right out, pass the line, right down, right down, right down to the, really. And then it's going to go all the way down Main Street and it's going to grow outside of it. So it's like, you can't drive around this town anymore. It's really getting bizarre. And the people in the city have really upset. I'm one of them. That, and I sat here for fifteen-some years and watched it happen. And it's getting worse and worse for the people living here. It's not a good feeling when you've been a taxpayer and you've lived in the city all your life. It's not. It's not a good feeling. And I know how some people feel out there. And it's just, it's frustrating. I mean, it's really frustrating. Something like that, that's going to happen. I think eventually all of this is going to be gone. This neighborhood is going to be gone. It's just a matter of time. Francis Street, all, it's all going to be gone. It's going to be twenty years, forty years. It's going to be gone. This is going to be all high rises. The city's too close to Boston. And it's just going to expand and expand. It's going to happen. I get it. But we're going into the other places. And I understand their frustration that way. We can barely get out of your house. You can't even get on the main drag because they come from everywhere. Those are my two cents. I just need a couple of weeks to filter this whole thing.
I, I've heard, you spent a lot of time on this today, and I don't know if two weeks would change much. I'm not saying it's not going to give it to you.
I know that.
I mean, the fact of the matter is this is a, this is a property that's on the edge of the downtown district. It isn't backed out downtown. It may at one time did a nice neighborhood. But I go down there and I see the YMCA, I see Quincy High School, I see the available buildings across the street from that. On the other side, I see car dealerships. And I'm sorry, times do change. And the city is growing. All eastern Massachusetts is growing. People in Braintree are complaining about this. People in Marshfield are complaining about this. People in Boston are complaining about this. But we have a recession. All the traffic goes away a little bit. So that might be coming. Our problem is we all want our kids cars. I think that's the problem. Every one of our kids have to have a car. And, and I, I, well, if the board is willing to give two more weeks, that's fine. But if not, I'm ready to go now.
The issue that I have with this, it seemed, I don't know what the cause is, this, the planning board stuff seems secret to me, so I don't know what's going on. Do you vote back to the planning board?
Yeah, if, if I could shine some light now on this, talking to Mr. Duke. They haven't had a forum because certain people haven't been there voting this project. And I don't know if that's for real or not. I don't know. I don't know. I need to go over to meetings to see who was there and who wasn't. They haven't even had a forum to vote on. There is an order of conditions in hand that I have from planning. Special conditions that if you guys are going to vote on this, and I will be putting with that, plus, plus the, the planning.
So wait a minute. They gave us an order of conditions for us to vote on?
No, I got an order of conditions that they were going to vote on that they didn't vote yet. But they're all written out. So these are their recommendations. And if we're going to vote on it, I would say we put these recommendations in there at least. Because that was their recommendations. Now, why they didn't vote on it, I don't know. They don't want to roll the state.
Do you have a date? Do you have a date to go back to, please?
The, the matter's been continued to, to October eighth. I've had a conversation, I've had a conversation with Mr. Timmons, City Councilor. You know, and, you know, I'm not going to speak for him, but we had a conversation with respect to the planning board still going to act on this. There were a number of reasons.
There's, there's things to do.
I think, I think what has to be very important to this board is the positive recommendation from the, from our planning department. You know, and the thorough peer review as well.
You know, but a recommendation to me is not a vote. You know what I'm saying? So somebody's told that it's not.
But typically, the planning board relies very, very heavily on just that.
But you're going back to them.
And it's peer review. And that's all been satisfied.
You're going back to them the eighth.
All right, all right, all right, all right. Thank you. We're not going to go back and forth there all night about current events. Anyone else?
Well, I'd like to read the, what you have there. I need time to read now, read now. Have you had the opportunity to digest that?
Yeah.
As well as if they're going back on the eighth, I'd like to know what happens on the eighth. I also, I have concerns environmentally about sixty-four cars on the second, the first and second floor in that dense neighborhood. And the exhaust and the fumes and how they're exhausting that straight up at, at the level of the houses that are around it. And I'm concerned about the water as well, environmentally, which is one concern with that.
I mean, it's, we have to, we have to, I just said, I mean, it sounds like you just need a couple of weeks though. I was ready to vote tonight, but that's fine.
I have a motion for a two-week, come to the, so we're going to ten.
Eight, right? Eight, I'll vote. Mr. Chairman, amendment number Z nineteen dash sixty. Well, twenty-nine thirty-one Newcombe Street, NLC, for a special permit, there is one plane identified from a thirty-six-unit presidential building on Thomas Temple. The preference is number twenty-nine thirty-one and thirty-five thirty-nine Newcombe Street. I make a motion to continue here until October eighth.
Sorry. On the motion, standing on all favor.
Aye.
Pose. Take five minutes. Thank you.
Yeah. You know, I know what I'm saying. Right, I know the town just, just happened.
She brought this to the board and said it would.
It's all like a technical for us.
You know how they're writing that significant thing? They're gonna use her. They're gonna say, you can't let someone get back. And so because of her, they're gonna have to get us.
You have to look back. It's actually, Mike, you know, you're ready to start looking at it. It could be, yeah. Because you're already in.
Oh, that's true. Like you're in the network. Then it's just you. You just go to Elton again for one night. So I didn't mean to throw anyone in the box by.
Amy, what's the current down?
We're, we're definitely, um, we're definitely, I told this to Timmy. Buy all the houses with tears. So where, where are those people going?
Well, the weird thing about you saying before, I mean, you guys have, one of you guys is gonna, we need to come up here to do twenty-one on Rock Bar. Just so you can see if the police let you do it, how you could do it. He was saying, I know it. But just actually, Greg and Kito, see if they really are something. And because the theory is, once they do it.
I really have to. I mean, I have seen. There's really been no such a shame of specifics, what they're, what those, what those variants is, the problems with the indoors, we get within the height of the flats. And what about the couple of, you know, speaking of.
No, 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 no. The question, and then, and that's the information. You know, and then go against whatever else. So where can this is, that's where I'm looking a lot. Yeah.
There is the, there are. Yeah, they're sure.
It's almost like, it's almost like.
There's a special. That's the building. It comes to the thing where it just became this, it's almost like, and no one would ever talk to you. No one would make a home in this district.
No, 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 I understand. But they must be asking for something. I have, I have two lines. Well, it's all for.
So is, is there a document that I can?
Yeah. And I'll be in a model.
Well, I've seen, I've seen.
Okay. Have any time, look at the dimensions. Yeah. That was kind of fun, Scott. We get back. And a new business case number Z nineteen sixty-two. Ricky Zen for special permit to install a roof sign in the front of September six fifty-seven Handbox Street. They are being a representative here.
Hi, my name is Ricky Zen. I'm the side contractor.
Address? I don't remember.
Oh, five eleven thousand, you remember?
Thank you.
The big, big hall side. So basically, we're trying to, um, doing the, um, the, the side, the, installing a side at the existing spot where the, uh, the genome used to be.
Yeah. What, how does that piece of the roof?
Yeah, it's just, it's just, um, like a couple inch above the roof.
Oh, okay. Because the roof is brown then. No, not with you. That's what it makes.
Oh, this, this thing right here?
Yeah.
Has been removed?
Okay.
Yeah.
That's what I'm saying. That's, that's what it is.
Oh, yeah, that's what it is.
It will be installed in a existing spot and same material.
Basically, the same kind of sign.
Basically, but this is LED?
LED, yeah. The existing one, you know, the papagino, you know, I heard from the landlord, has been there more than twenty years. It's neon sign. I mean, it's neon inside, but, but.
I've never seen a whip. You know, we saw that for Papa Gino's thing? And we stopped there with the regular sign. I knew it was a whip. What's the dimensions of that? Twenty inches?
Uh, the dimension is, uh, is a twen-, uh, two, two twenty-one inch. It's like, um, eighteen and a half feet long.
Right. What's this yellow in, in the other thing? What is that?
The other thing is, um, um, they are, they are like, like two fan tires combined together into one, uh, one store.
But those are lit also?
And, and you see, you see the, the brick side on the side, they have two, two sides to come, combo.
What?
On the left. Yeah, okay. Yeah. Yes, you just repaint it. You repaint the same.
Were they out?
The side will be lit. What are the side, hours of the side?
Do they have another sign on the right side that we get to? Is that yours?
Yeah.
Is it only gonna be lit when the, when the business is open?
Yes.
And what are the hours of the business?
Yes.
What are the hours? What are your hours?
Uh, six to seven is the, um, we open eleven to eleven, but six to eleven is the.
The time you'll have.
Yes. The time you'll have.
The light will be on, uh, from six P., uh, from seven P.M. to eleven P.M.
Seven to eleven P.M.?
Yes.
Oh, what is that?
Seven days?
Seven days.
It started four thirty in the morning. My one turn on that.
This, this is how, how far, how many square feet is this sign?
How many square feet?
Yeah.
Uh, thirty-four.
Mr. Duke, what, what is the, uh, area of the sign?
So we generally limit them to fifty square feet or twenty-five percent of the building facade. It's a moving target. A lot of times, buildings don't have a facade. So we look to see that space. But my biggest concern is the lighting behind the sign right now going back and forth with that. They have an LED backlit. I just have no sense how bright that would be in the neighborhood. So what's the luminance? I would just ask the board to take that into consideration.
What's the luminance of light that that gives off?
The luminance, um, is like, uh, less than six hundred luminance. You talking about the brightness, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, six, less than six hundred.
Six hundred what? Luminance?
Luminance, yeah.
Six hundred luminance?
Yes. Uh, in more than, they require less than eight hundred in, in a city of water. Uh, most of the time, they, they, um, they, they, uh, they allow not more than eight hundred luminance.
No, I know. And I'm just trying to think of.
This is six hundredths.
Will, will you allow them to install six hundred for the, for the sign?
But what's the brightness? Ah, I see. You're reading the light?
Uh, the, the brightness is like, uh, when you straight looking at, uh, six, uh, sixty watt bulb.
Also on group. I know, you can't, you can't, you can't, you can't do that. It's not the same. LED lighting is not the same. It's like ten times, ten times brighter than regular light bulbs.
According to my chart over here.
Yeah.
It's equal to ten watts for an LED.
Yeah.
Well, that's pretty soft lighting.
Six hundred is, but it's still, it's like twenty-seven, eleven, eleven, two, four, six, nine, two sides, three. If there's the, uh, is there, is there, uh, any electrical with this? Do you have any electrical prints for this? Electrical prints on the sign? You have a sign? You have a set of electrical prints for this?
That's diverse. I, I, I think, I think the, the electricity will, will do that. I'm not the electricity.
I tell you, you're a sign guy.
I'm the sign guy.
You don't have a set of drawings that tells you how it's wired, where it's wired with, what's, what's on the电线?
Oh, I, I mean, if you want, I can, I can do that for you, but, um, I don't have that with me right now at this moment.
All right, let's go to the hearing and we'll just take this five minutes. Okay, here you go. Okay. All right. Do you do that? Is there anyone here that's speaking in favor? First of all, scientific call.
John Waterfell, Z, John Waterfell, A Jackson Street, nine. I'm in favor of this. I mean, with new traffic and new growth comes new signs. Okay? So, I mean, we gotta accept new signs. We can't be against new signs. And they're gonna say twenty-three feet letters of Boston Scientific, okay? Twenty-three feet we approved of letters of Boston Scientific. So gigantic sign that, that we approved. So if we let Boston Scientific do it, I said, you know, we're gonna have to let everyone do it. So we're gonna have to let them do it to be fair. Okay? So, but I mean, if, if, you know, to think of, think of Eric Solomon when he voted yes. So in memory of Eric, I, I approve this. Thank you.
Is there anyone else that's speaking in favor? Second call, third call. How the favor, I think it came in close. I, I got a letter here from the DPW. They reviewed the Bubba Ruffin's project and they have no comments. Is there anyone opposed on the side? First of all, second call, third call, close.
You don't.
Right, do this. Approval under, just giving you a case to say the water is fine and then we can do it.
I'll go.
I'll go. Fair enough?
Little proven, I'm sorry, I'm a little proven, contingent on your. Yeah. Sign off. Sign off.
Mr. Duke is sign off. How's that?
That's, that's.
Mr. Chairman, is it possible to have a dimmer switch on this?
Well, that's what I'm saying. We'll talk about it. Probably, you know, do all that. Why don't you put that in there just in case?
Okay.
Now, because it's simple. It's simple to put a dimmer switch on it. If you're in any way you want. Watch it. So why don't you just have it installed anyway and help share our case? When a gentleman remembers that you've been looking at, and I'll go with.
So, yeah, continue on that.
When it's done, and we'll move on.
Okay. So Z nineteen-sixty-two, Ricky Zen for a special permit to install a roof sign in front of number six fifty-seven Handbox Street. I made a motion to grant a special permit, uh, after it's been signed off, with a dimmer switch and the okay for, uh.
Permission to petition to. On the, on the motion? Standing in all favor?
Aye.
Pose. Some more. Thank you.
Thank you.
Call Mr. Duke tomorrow.
What?
Call Mr. Duke tomorrow. When I saw your presentation to put a dimmer on that light.
Yes.
You got it?
Yes.
Thank you. Z nineteen sixty-three, E White Milk Y L L C LLC for variance for demolish the existing
Evening members of the board, I'm Tony Henry Levin, Gate seventy-five, South Avenue in Quincy. And I'm here representing E White Milk Y LLC. Uh, we're proposing to, uh, build a, to tear down a single-family home at two twenty-three Parry Street and erect a brand-new two-family. The covered building is, was built approximately nineteen-hundred and it's not in good shape, to be honest. The, some of the reasons that we're here, uh, has to do with the setback requirements. Uh, the lot itself is only five thousand square feet. This was done in a subdivision way back in eighteen hundreds. And it meets, it, it fits in what the neighborhood is. They're pretty much very small lots. So right away, but it's a non-conforming lot, so we don't have to ask for a, a variance on that. Uh, the second thing is the setbacks on the sidelines. Right now, there is, uh, currently a ten-foot, uh, on, uh, setback, uh, I'm sorry, four-point five feet on one side and, uh, eighteen feet on the other side. That's the existing. We're gonna make that better by the four, four-point five and making that ten feet. And the right side, we're trying to balance it out, and that would be fourteen feet to try to. That's the existing, we're gonna make that better by the four, four point five and making that ten feet, and the right side, we're trying to balance it out, and that would be fourteen feet, to try to balance it into the middle of the lot. Uh, likewise, on the front, uh, right now, there's only a ten-foot setback, we're proposing a twenty-foot setback, which again, doesn't meet the requirement, but it's better than what's already there. Uh, the, the, uh, rear, that, that has plenty of space, that's not a concern at all. I did make a mistake, and if you're looking, the, the minimum lot area, uh, is, uh, twenty-five hundred, and I had, I divided one, I went, I didn't go to my fear, went to the law school.
Or, or does it happen in there?
Yeah, every lawyer makes a mistake except for Bill Hall.
So, and then, and then we have the, the, uh, the, the height is two and a half stories high, which is, well, is allowed, uh, the, uh, floor area is a little less than, than required. And the, the setback on the parking just meets the requirements, it, it's pretty much, we're trying to fit in a two-family into a small lot, which is there. And as I pointed out, if you've ever driven by, you really could stand, uh, some, some help. I don't know if there's any questions that you may have, and Mr. Edman Uus here, he's the principal of E White.
I don't have anything right now, but...
I have, I have one, one other with the, the mounds of dirt.
Say the name, sir.
The mounds of dirt, what are they?
The mounds of dirt?
Yeah.
That's right. The dirt is for, to, uh, for the excavator to get a little more higher, to get to the, the roof for down.
For down?
Yes. And those are will be removed after.
Okay. If we approve this today, when do you plan to eliminate that?
I think we're planning as long as, uh, at the permit will start, I think, after the twenty-day meeting.
Right, right, yes. All right. No questions?
Let's take you up, four spots, one in the front?
One in front and three, and, and three in the back.
And now what's the, uh... What are you gonna separate the neighbor's yard from, because I know you have parking fence in the back, on both sides, are you doing a stockade fence, doing...
There are fence on there now, we're gonna replace it with a vinyl fence.
Okay. That's all I have right now.
Anybody have a seat, sir?
Thank you.
So anybody like to speak in favor? In favor of this project, once, twice, three times, I applaud the hearing close, I have a letter from DPW, we reviewed the Bubba Project, and our comments are as follows, one, break. It's a bit, uh, maintenance plan with opposed drainage structures, two, is there any soil tests proposed, proposed locations for the drainage structures to determine soil properties and level of water table? With the significant increase in the impervious area, we recommend six units of Culp-Tec three thirty chambers to be used. An inspection port should be installed in each room of the infiltration chamber, water, a full water flow test for city water department, sewer, the chimney in the existing five-inch pipe should be inspected with television, pre and post-development, and order check condition of the systems if they are to be reused. Two, install clean-out for the sewer service pipe, general issues, please, uh, provide the road to control barrier, stabilize construction entrance, and back inlet filters and catch bases during construction. Two, the pipe to tree, or, the tree audience required entries or need interest is to be removed. Three, submit oil cat file for the project before applying the build permit, the files should be best in plain coordinated system, and preferably in Quincy standard data layers. Before, upon completion of the project, as your plans show the utilities, the, the precision grade records about the benchmarks defining the total size, so the right ones can be submitted in a roll-up oil cat file, the plan should be stamped and signed by a professional land surveyor or professional engineer. Anybody opposed to run the side? Opposed to run the side? Nobody? Once, twice, three times, applaud the hearing close.
Ask a question on the bedroom situation, you said you, you had a two and a half story house, but you, you're essentially making the entire third floor bedroom.
Well, third floor should be three bedrooms, two, uh, two, uh, full bath, but I guess the architect mistake, you put three bathrooms in there instead, and the second floor should be living room, kitchen, dining room, and a half a bath.
Yeah, but you said you had, your, your application says it's two and a half stories.
It is two and a half.
Yeah, I mean, technically, but you're making the third story a full, a full, I mean, you, you're dormering, you're not dormering, you're just making a little pitch roof, so you, you essentially have a three-story hall.
It has a dorm, that is a dorm.
It's a lot of houses, you got a bed, bedroom in the basement, you got three, you got, you got six bedrooms, on a lot that...
Why is there one in the basement? Playroom or...
Well, there's a bedroom and a chair. There's both. You gotta pull back. It's just a lot of...
There's a bedroom in the basement.
They're, they're two floor, two, two floor units.
Yeah, yeah, you're not building it, I mean, it's not just your average two-family that's, you know, two floors and two bedrooms on each, you know, it's a massive house on a small, uh, lot.
Yeah.
On a street that can't take anymore parking.
Yeah, that's the problem.
You don't park on the front lawn.
Well, it is a problem.
No, I know, I know.
John, get the yellow.
You're getting the gas. I'm off.
I'm probably beat up.
Yeah, well, it's gonna be, either burnt down, or...
Thirty-one was being so, so spicy on this.
Looks like it was burnt already, I don't know. The animals are surely moving in there.
I don't know if there's anybody cut down or anything, but I mean, that's just...
Oh, great.
Yeah, give me your, your, your...
Well, then, you know, the back, what would be two things?
Huh?
Then it's gonna be that much of a two thing, you know?
What's your, uh...
Twenty-four by, hey, it's still twenty-four by thirty-two, thirty-four?
There are four floors now. Yeah. I understand, I mean, it's, 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 you know what you're gonna end up with, you gotta be better. These families are huge guys. They have two guys.
That's a third story. It's not tall, but it's third story. We beat up somebody else again last week for a third story.
So, how many bedrooms do we have, though?
Each room? Uh, each room, wait. Savage family has a boy.
Three boys and one girl.
Two girls and one.
Wish it had a bedroom, I feel bad, I guess.
No, I have two girls.
Look, I'm sorry, dude.
It'll do it to you.
Oh, yes. I'm a miller.
Yeah, I, I, I mean, three bedrooms each, three is not a lot, but it, it's, it's like, it is what it is.
Standing it out front, you got it?
No, I know, I know, I, I would just would think it's not, it's not that, not bad, uh, I know we could give her a, a basement, a little bit of light, but, uh...
What are they building on the streets?
Sexually? No, it is, it's, it's, there's living space on four floors. I can have that, sir? Yes, detached buildings, one, three stories, cut back. You spend that money?
See, I know, I wouldn't have been up there.
Yeah, I, I, you know, it is, I think it's all right, I think it's... New development, get rid of that lousy house, and, 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 two, three bedrooms is not a lot, I don't think, that's what I think, welcome to free house, it's just... And I, I tell you, last two months, I was looking, I was, I was probably five, all summer, I spent trying to find a three bedroom, and there wasn't that many help there, they, they gone. How we go?
Uh, Mr. Chairman, number Z nineteen sixty-three, E, E White Realty LLC, for a variance in the demolition existing single family, construction of two-family, number premises number two twenty-three Barron Street, I make a motion to grant the variance.
Second?
Second.
On the motion, standing on, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, close?
Aye.
Aye. Uh, we got a problem, it went down. Okay, uh... We thought? Something else, I guess? All right, my motion, we draw it out, bridges?
Yes.
So we can do that?
Mr. Chairman, number Z nineteen dash sixty, E Jane Realty LLC, for a variance in the demolition existing single family, construction of two-family, number premises number two two three Barron Street, I make a motion to draw the bridges.
Second? On the motion? All, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Close, so move. Thank you, thank you. Third amendment to next agenda. Z nineteen sixty-five, Phil Baker, Wingwood Design, for variance fine into demolition existing garage in Greaseway, and construct a second-story addition on the existing footprint, one oh nine Grove, for the representative here.
Chairmakers on the board, names Philip Baker, Frogger Design, uh, with the art picture firm, uh, working design for the building, and my clients, uh, Edward and Margaret Gooch, uh, very highly, uh, so looking to demolish the existing, uh, one-story garage and attached Greaseway, and construct a new two-story, uh, structure in its place, uh, as well as, uh, build up the existing footprint, uh, their growing family wants to include the, their existing ranch, uh, they want, you know, an actual garage that fits a car, and now it's about ten feet wide, they're...
That's a good idea.
Uh, so, uh, the new proposed structure, the garage, uh, we're a master sheet above, and we're building up all the existing footprint, uh, I'm sort of asking for, uh, a variance, uh, for the front setback, and also finding, because we're building up over a non-conforming, uh, on the front setback, uh, as well, so, ask your things.
I know, I looked, I looked at it, and I kind of liked, I don't say, but, I don't have to go. I have any questions? The light up one. Go ahead, I have a light up.
Oh, that's the existing assessment card.
I, I know, they just, without the...
Assesses little like, I don't give a...
Yeah.
It doesn't make sense.
My daughter's room.
I read it all the time.
That was homework lesson.
Smart three-year-old.
Any other questions?
Nope, I don't, no questions.
I'm good for now, thanks.
You can have a seat. Does anyone like to speak in favor? Speak in favor?
Quickly, John Rutherford, A, Jackson Street, I am in favor of this, I'm in favor of letting people make their houses bigger, if you let people really make a lot of pockets in a small space, so, this is a good project.
They're happy they got the one.
Anyone else like to speak in favor? First call, second call, third call, all the body in the close, I have a letter here from DPW, here reviewed the Bubba Project, and I have no comments, anyone opposed to run the side? Opposed to run the side? First call, second call, third call closed, I think it's a pretty project, it's nice, they could make a nice home, and it's all going to work.
I don't think too bad, I have one question, where did your house for medical?
Phil, you should say something.
He doesn't like him.
First answer, maybe you don't worry about it, uh...
I'll be, I'll be in favor.
Favor.
Aye. On the motion, first call.
So it's gonna be the last case in the night, I would like... Mr. Chairman, number Z nineteen sixty-six, Phil Baker, with, with...
It's not a, a lot, right?
Phil Baker.
It's actually rock wood, sorry.
Rock wood, thank you. Rock wood designed for a variance fine into demolition existing garage in Greaseway, and construct a second-story addition over the existing footprint on the premises number one oh nine Grove, I make a motion to grant the variance.
Aye. On the motion, standing on, all in favor?
Aye.
Close, so move.
Chairman, I make a motion to withdraw.
Aye. On favor?
Aye.
Close, so move, thank you, ladies and gentlemen.